We will go ahead and, and call the meeting to order. I want to welcome everyone for coming back to this, uh, this workshop on community safety and security. Thank you for attendance. Uh, those who are here, those who are online. Um, and to begin, if everyone could please stand, if you have a hat, remove your hat for the pledge of allegiance. Ready?
Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is standing. One nation, unharmed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you can remain standing, please, uh, Mayor Jeremy Smith will lead us in an invocation.
Absolutely. Will you please join me in a moment of silence first as we honor the men and women that gave the ultimate sacrifice? Thank you for that. Jeremiah Father, thank you so much, Lord, for this amazing day that once again Canyon Lakers get to come together and make this place an even better place than it is, Lord. We're so blessed to have the community members that we do and having the P O A and the city, our sheriff's department, our fire department, and everyone that makes this place so incredible. And it truly is a little piece of paradise, Lord. Let us be remembrance of the importance of you and all we do. And I close my prayer in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mayor Smith. Let's, uh, let's do a verification of quorum.
Yes, Director Bill. Director Cook.
Here.
Director Commission. Director Doherty.
Here.
President Mandelit.
Here.
Vice President Kormet.
Also to introduce, uh, all our, one, I got a couple, a couple of opening comments. First of all, thank you. Thank you to the community, uh, for everyone who came out last Monday, uh, last Monday. It is a, uh, we, we hear all your comments. I appreciate all of the speaking that people did. They spoke for over an hour. We had about twenty-one speakers and, uh, great comments offered in the spirit of, hey, let's, we want to work together to make this place better. And so, thank you for that. We appreciate that feedback. Uh, we also want to know that we, we heard you. And so tonight we have gathered every organization, every agency that is responsible for the security and safety of our community is here tonight. Uh, we felt it was important to, to do it quickly and to come here with everyone, uh, to, to engage in, in a dialogue with you, uh, on this subject. And so I want to thank in particular the city, uh, the, the sheriff's department, the fire department, our staff and, and all the members who are here. And so Mayor Smith, I'll turn it over for you for a minute.
Yeah, we want to echo the same, you know, sentiments and, um, truly thank you Canyon Lakers. You know, social media is a beast. It's quite the animal now. Um, but I will say that you have a board of directors and you have a council that is paying attention to everything that's happening in the community and we're trying to be as responsive as we can. So when we reached out to city staff, city council and our local, obviously sheriff's department and fire, we were eager at the opportunity to once again try to make Canyon Lake the safest place we possibly can. And we can't do it without the help of the community. So I just want to applaud the residents of Canyon Lake for making us not only accountable, but making sure that we're creating the most amazing place to live. So thank you. I just want to say thank you for this opportunity.
And if I can add this, what you provided for us last Monday was a call to action. Uh, we heard loud and clear that it's time for us to, to continue to make improvements to do, to do better. And, uh, and to do so, it requires all of us to do that. Uh, the city has certain responsibilities and authorities and the P O A has certain authorities and responsibilities. And likewise with our fire department and our sheriff's organization office that does it. And so all of us here are, are working here together. And what you see represented here and, uh, before you is we are forging a partnership, uh, to, to continue to make this community, uh, more secure, uh, and safer. And so the purpose of today's meeting is, is to have a dialogue. We, at the board meeting, normally we have the, the period where members can speak on, on non-agenda items and a number of people spoke, as I said, uh, last week. But at that, in, in that non-agenda items, board members are not allowed to engage in a dialogue. So the purpose of tonight is we're allowed to ask questions, go back and forth and, and, and have answer some of the things and maybe ask more questions to get clarification from you on things. So, so we want this to be a, a joint effort, uh, to work together on it. So at, as you see in the agenda, it says that, at the beginning, we typically allow members who would like to get up and speak to give us, uh, your perspective on, on a non-gen item. I do want you to know that we have prepared two presentations. The city has prepared a presentation and the P O A has prepared a presentation. And so in it, we're going to tell you some, what we already do. We're also going to tell you what we heard and some of the suggestions that you have for us and what we're going to consider. Uh, and so I want to invite you, if you, if you feel the need to come up and speak at the beginning, you're welcome to do that. Or if you'd like to hear the presentation and speak to us and engage in any questions you might have during the, during or after the presentations, we can do that as well. So given that, is there anyone who would like to speak from the members beforehand?
Okay. As he said, if you'd like to skip and wait for your comments at the end, just let us know now. We're going to go down the list. Our first is Art Femster.
Art Femster, Track and Lot, three, seven, one, nine, three, one, five. So thank you very, very much for everybody being here. We appreciate that. It means a lot to us as members. And I just want to talk about something I don't think will be discussed tonight because it's not something that's maybe as obvious. If you will, and this is going to sound silly, but here's an actual example from three nights ago. A lady at three o'clock in the morning, her ring camera, I guess flashed, she did something. There were kids directly across the street breaking into their Jeep. Didn't break in. They didn't leave it locked and that happens on that. Four of them standing there inside there, going through the Jeep inside. Her and her husband went out, chased after him, caught up with them, had some dialogue and left. They didn't call the police. I had a side discussion with her and I understand it was three in the morning. We jumped out. We wanted to protect our property. That happens. What bothers me though, is the follow-on comments or kind of amazes me on that. One lady said, huh, I'm sure you're right about the police not coming out. Might still be a good idea to complain though. Here's the best one. So police won't come out for breaking into entering? Question on that? And the other one on that, yeah, goes, let's be honest, the police aren't coming out for this. It's not an emergency, but damn kids, these young people breaking into cars, blah, 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 blah. And on that, and another lady inside here, resident of ten years, actually a friend of, where's Dale? Dale's not here. On that, oh, he's in the back there. So her comment on it, are you telling me we have a written contract that allocates a police officer patrolling Canyon Lake twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week? I was hitting the keyboard so hard and kept to let it say, yes, we have a from above inside that. So there seems to be a lack of awareness when people don't think we have police, just whatever on that, they don't call the police. So my suggestion's on here is marketing the police department. Sounds crazy, but you know, it happens on that. So one of the things as a suggestion is monthly Facebook posts. I mean, this would be the city and/or the P O A, not the sheriff's. You already, already do that where you could do as well, but with officer friendly inside there, one of the deputies from Canyon Lake on that, pictured above officer friendly with, you know, handing out badges to the kids, petting the dog, walking a goldfish, something inside there, but ended on everyone inside there that remember our Canyon Lake deputies are here to protect and serve. See something, say something. Don't let it go away on that. And just keep hammering in every single, probably twice a month, maybe. And when I see it on the homepage of, of the city or they're there, I'll pass it on to everybody else. People need to know. Another one on that is partially, we have a ghost car. If there's a junky old car down at the station there, park it at community patrol. It's secure there. It's, that's not secure there, twenty-four hour building with security there. But when they drive in, they're going to see this patrol car go, oh, we have police. Look, there's a cop there. Why is there a cop there? What's going on? Oh, hey, the police are in here. I guess we can't do things. So if they can do it, or maybe buy one of their junky cars and just take everything out, gut it, you can take the interior and just leave it there, black and white with the light bar on it. Um, the other one possibly, and Eric's going to love this, you're going to love this idea. Build a shack next to the community patrol where it says Canyon Lake Police, served by Riverside County Sheriff's. Now, we could probably whip that out together, me and you, Eric, over the weekend on that. It's not that hard inside there. Right on that, and then have maybe a ring down phone. So people are going to walk up on there. There's not going to be a deputy or will say the deputy is on patrol, but if he is there, he can write reports. It's another awareness when you drive by. And then one of the other things, and I hope I get in trouble here, Captain inside here.
Art, it's been about three minutes. Can you just wrap it up for us quickly?
There's what now?
It's been three minutes. If you can wrap it up, your comments.
Can I finish?
You sure can.
Yeah. Okay. Yes. Thank you. The, um, I know it was talked about by someone at the station. Popsicles in the park. I know the sheriff's department does that down at Elsinore, Wildomar, which is a community event. Officers come out, the community comes out and they just do fun stuff together. I know in Canyon Lake, the kids would love that. But again, it's a chance to bond together and talk and let them know the police are here because otherwise it's our one deputy on patrol. He's parked in front of a house writing a report. He goes to the next house, the next house, the next house. So that's some thoughts. Thank you very much for your time and your
Thank you, Eric.
understanding.
Appreciate it. And if you want to speak up later at the presentation, you're welcome to come back and, and add some comments.
Lindsay Clark.
Sorry, um, first time. So I'm probably going to do this completely wrong, obviously. Sorry, guys. Um, first off, I'd like to say R S O, guys, we know you're everywhere you can possibly be and you can't be everywhere at once. Thank you for what you do. It's not an easy job. Um, I'm here to discuss motorcycle safety, but our security in general and the lack of it. Um, not by our deputies, but by our three million dollar hired security firm. Um, I personally, in the last three months have had my bike stolen twice, twice from the front gate, right next to the guard shacks. I've also had my cover vandalized twice. In addition to that, there's been five other instances with motorcycle issues over the last year. Not in addition to that, just over the last year. Let that sink in. Right by the guard shacks. Why? Why? Either security is in on this or they're letting people in, or the word's gotten out that, hey, P O A and security is not going to do crap. It's a free for all. Come shop in our parking lots. This is unacceptable. Yes, we all understood when we moved in. We are not allowed to have our motorcycles. All well and good. I've been here for eight years. The first five years I was here, I never thought twice about leaving my motorcycle at the gate. Never thought twice. People use their motorcycles as daily drivers now with gas prices. Thank you, um, our illustrious government. Um, you know, traffic, it's a pain in the ass. We all know that. It's a pain to take our bikes to and from the gate every single day. It's a pain. It's not easy, especially for people that are working to, like, I'm a nurse in the ER. I work a twelve-hour shift. I don't want to have to drive my, drag my trailer out there, unload, drag my trailer back home at midnight, one o'clock in the morning. When I get home, my husband's a C H P. He doesn't want to take his bike, his trailer out there at three, four o'clock in the morning, work his shift and then have to come home. You guys know how tired you are. You know what I mean? Like it's absolutely out of control. I have discussed things with some of the other bikers and we are wondering if there's a way that residents only could bring our bikes home. I was speaking with a gentleman talking about a, uh, he brought up a wonderful idea of a red, white and blue plan where each gate is a specific color. You are allowed to come in only the gate closest to your residence, to your residence and back out, no guests, and only on the streets going to and from your home. If you are caught on another street, if you are caught breaking the speed limits, anything like that, that privilege is revoked. Or at the very least, put a gate around our motorcycles. Keep our stuff safe. This is our property. You guys are in charge of securing our property, keeping our stuff and our persons safe. I can't even, I mean, if you guys can't keep motorcycles safe, no wonder there's shots being fired at Holiday Harbor on Fourth of July. No wonder there's people losing their babies to drunk drivers on Fourth of July. This is out of control and something needs to change. It has been begged for, for years. I sent an email to the board when my second bike got stolen and I was told that, that cameras were being put in place. That was almost a month ago. Nothing's changed. That was my second bike. What happened with the first one? And yes, I did file an R S O report both times and R S O got with security and security was told them. I will, I will have that. Security was told that they didn't have any footage because they don't have cameras on the front gate. Thank you.
Thank you. So we certainly hear your comments.
Thomas Bowman.
Um, this is hard to talk about because, um, it's kind of a forbidden subject in Canyon Lake. We have a problem with alcohol use in Canyon Lake. It's, it's been this way for many years evidently. I've only been here the last three years. I've never seen so much alcohol abuse and it starts, it's as I, as I mentioned, it's, is there's a culture here. Um, and all of you set the example. Um, there's an old saying, what the parents allow in moderation, the children will do in excess. Um, I believe that's saying applies to all of us and what you guys allow in moderation. Um, the rest of the community has a tendency to do in excess. It's, it's a real personal subject for me. Um, my mom broke her neck from abusing alcohol and died. And so, um, the subject's very personal. Um, so I'm trying to get past that. Um, I I'm disturbed, um, on a regular basis, um, with not just the use of alcohol in public places. Um, but, uh, the example that is set by very well-known people in the community in the abuse of alcohol and, um, the use of alcohol with almost every public event. Um, it doesn't have to be this way. We don't need to have alcohol to have a good time. You can have a great time without alcohol. Um, why would someone want to bring their kids to a park or a beach where there's people drinking multiple six-packs of beer, uh, drinking pints of alcohol? Um, you get what we got because of that kind of thing. And I'm just asking for you guys to consider a cultural shift to, um, talk about responsible alcohol use. Um, and to consider, um, messaging the community about the, um, responsible use of alcohol. Thank you.
Thank you.
Glenn Biondi.
Good afternoon. Uh, just a couple of quick remarks about the e-bike safety. I know we talked about it a lot last week. Um, after the meeting, after the, uh, board meeting last week, I was out in the parking lot and there was a couple of kids on the bikes. And I asked them if they registered their bikes and they kind of proudly jumped out that because they were under fifty cc and they had pedals that they didn't have to. And I think they were misunderstanding. They may not have to do that for the state. Um, but I don't think there's any reason why we as a community can't have them registered and have a tag, just like we have to do for our boats and for our golf carts. Um, but the other thing too was that, as I was talking with somebody out there, he sells them. Um, he said that one of the difficulties that they have is they get on their bikes and they just go and it's hard for, uh, community patrol to keep up with these kids being in cars and stuff. So I had a few suggestions. Um, I think you probably have maybe thought of some of them or a lot of them. Anyway, it just kind of proves that great minds think alike, but nevertheless, if we get them registered so that we know how to track them, if these kids are violating the, the rules because it's for their own safety. Um, also, I, is there an age limit? Yesterday, my wife and I were driving home at the corner of Vacation and Canyon Lake Drive. There was a kid on an e-bike. He couldn't have been more than ten years old, couldn't even reach the ground. Um, really, really surprised that, uh, these young kids can, can drive these bikes on the streets like that. Um, the other thing I thought about was if the P O A or the city combined could invest, maybe buy three or four bikes and put patrols on, uh, on, on bikes to go after these kids and be able to be able to track them down and find parents, have these kids go through safety courses, just like we have to for our boats. Make an age limit and then make sure that they're complying and they understand the safety rules because it may be a pain in the neck for the parents, but, uh, too bad. It'd be better than, you know, they complain about that than complaining about a child in a coffin. But, um, I think last week, uh, President Van Vliet used, made a comment that some of these kids are saying to the, uh, security patrol, uh, that they don't have, their parents are telling them, they don't have to listen to this, to what they're told. I think that's disappointing, but, uh, not surprising in this culture. So anyway, those are just some of my comments, suggestions and, um, that's it. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Glenn. And I think we will speak quite a bit more about that subject tonight. So there'd be lots of opportunity for engagement.
Our last is Renee Griffiths.
Hello. Um, I first like to thank our first responders for everything you do every day and the sacrifices you guys are willing to make, including giving up Fourth of July, but most importantly, willing to risk your lives for ours. Everyone here appreciates it. So I just want you to know how much, um, we keep you guys in our prayers.
Yeah.
Um, I see on the agenda that the city's going to do a presentation on the roles and responsibilities, everyone, um, between city council and city. But I like to point out, President Van Vliet, the one that you did, I believe in April was fantastic. And maybe some of those screens can be posted on Instagram, little reminders because you did an excellent job on that. I think folks on a continual, um, being reminded of that would be excellent. So I have a couple of things mainly for the city. And I understand you can't respond, although maybe some, I have some yes and no's. And if you can, that'd be great. So I am curious, it was on the June agenda that the city was considering, uh, entering into a, uh, an agreement with a firm called Jacob Green and Associates for ninety-two thousand, two hundred dollars for a law enforcement services study to evaluate what, if any, alternate approaches the city should consider for law enforcement services. So I was curious if you've entered into that agreement. And then also I know you can't say now because the scope is a, a detailed question, but I know we can get a public information request on that. Um, but more importantly, I was curious if the city was considering exploring their own police department. Cause I do have concerns about that. I think R S O is fantastic. And, um, so I don't know. Are you allowed to say yes or no to anything? Or no?
Thank you, Renee, for the questions. Appreciate it. So, um, luckily tonight with the format that's before us, we are allowed to respond. And I have a full presentation that I'm going to be discussing that exact item.
Right. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And then, um, two more things real quick, and it's probably going to be in a presentation, but I would hope the city, if there's any changes on the P O A when it comes to e-bikes, that the city is going to do something from an ordinance and a fine. So you know, there's only so many patrol officers going out, but if they go across the street, then there's something matching and that'll help and that'll help prevent the P O A being sued by a member for age discrimination. If you put an age limit on there, so the ordinance would back it up. And then last but not least, um, the lights. And I know you're doing a lot of road work, but hopefully the lights can be repaired on the outside of Canyon. It's been close to a year, if not a year, and it's incredibly dark. So from a safety for everyone who's driving on that greatly appreciate if that can get added real soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. Go further. I'll remember comments. Okay. With that, uh, Mayor Smith, the floor is yours.
Presentation time? Cool. PowerPoint. All right. How's everyone doing so far? Caffeine level? Okay. We're hanging in there. Yep. Okay. Um, all right, we're going to take a stab at this. Uh, you know, the biggest thing, especially for those of us who have ran for office in this community is what's the difference between the P O A and the city? It's probably what has spent the most time in conversations with one-on-one. And, um, I, I'm so appreciative that the P O A and the city is doing this because we get a chance to dive in to a little bit about what we're responsible for and what the P O A is responsible for. Um, as it can see here from the slide, Riverside County Sheriff's Department, um, obviously they are our fighters. We love them to death. Um, they're in charge of crime prevention, DUI enforcement, uh, criminal investigation, arrest, um, and detention. So that's their primary focus that they help uh, with the city. And you know, they've been a huge partner. Um, Captain's been a phenomenal resource for our community and responds to us and gives us all the information as uh, most people ask for it. Canyon Lake Fire Department, they're actually in the house. They're all behind you right now. Give it up for our boys and gal. We love our Canyon Lake Fire Department. And as most of you know, they're in charge of fire suppression, fire protection, um, and prevention and emergency medical services. And we believe that they've been doing an incredible job and we're so thankful to have our leader chief here, um, who's leading the charge on that. Code enforcement, um, you might've seen, um, a lot of our code enforcement vehicles. We're, uh, blessed to have a relationship with AQMD and all those vehicles are fully funded by the AQMD. So when you see those Jeeps or, um, Dodge driving around, that's fully funded, not by Canyon Lake dollars. Those are from AQM dollars. And they're in charge of municipal code enforcement, residential rental program, our enforcement of the B L M area. Um, and building and life safety concerns. And what we mean by that is, is our building department, they help oversee, um, our building inspections. They help with uh, anything related to the residential rental program, making sure that properties are up to code for safety reasons. So our code enforcement does a lot of good work here, um, in our community. And last we have AFV, which is animal control and sheltering. Uh, most of you know what they do, animal licensing, uh, vicious dogs and rabid animals, sheltering for lost stray animals. So that's kind of the distinction of what the city's roles are in some of those departments. Um, but now I'm going to kick it over to sheriff. Who's going to lead it? Lieutenant or captain? Lieutenant's got it. Okay.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Lieutenant Edwards with the Riverside Sheriff's Department. This is Captain Rails. Uh, we are out at the Lake Elsinore Station. I oversee the Canyon Lake contract. So what we'll do is we'll go over some of the, uh, contract details to let you know what we do out here.
Not me. They don't let me do that.
Very perfect. Okay. So what we do out here for patrol operations is we have twenty-four daily contract hours. So that equates to about four point six deputies. We do two patrol watches, zero, six to six and six to zero, six. So we're out here twenty-four hours a day. We have one unit that patrols. Next slide. So part of that contract service, obviously it has support staff. So that includes the captain, the lieutenant, me. We have four sergeants that cover the supervisory role of that deputy. We have an investigator that assists with more in-depth crimes out here. We have a crime analyst, two S S Os that support logistics, vehicle maintenance, stuff like that. We have two C S Os that are responsible for evidence. So anything that's booked into the station is evidence. Uh, we have a C S O in charge of training. We have, uh, one deputy that's a C B A T's mental health. So any calls for mental health issues, we have a, a dedicated unit with a mental health specialist that will come out and take that call. Uh, we also have a deputy that's in charge of CPS, so child protective services and adult protective services, any referrals by those agencies. We have a deputy that oversees that dedicated. So they'll come out here and handle those calls in addition to the patrol deputies. And then you have accounting and finance, office and clerical. But wait, that's not all. So in addition to that, we have a dispatcher that supports. That's what dispatches us to the calls. So when you call into P S A, they take the call, they dispatch it to our law enforcement. Deputies that patrol the area. So you get coroner, you get the dive team, you get aviation. We have our newest mounted enforcement detail. They haven't been out here yet, but doesn't mean we can't get them out, but they can ride the horses around for large events. We have search and rescue, central homicide unit, major crimes, anything that's an in-depth investigation, they will handle. We have a forensic unit, uh, force investigations detail. They handle a lot of our deputy involved shootings. We have, uh, our media information bureau. Everybody loves the SWAT and K nine and our hazardous device team. That's all at our disposal with this contract. In addition, we have gang task force. We have narcotics teams. We have the fentanyl team because of the fentanyl crisis. And then we have human resources so that we can hire and retain people. So with that, so we'll go over some Fourth of July stats. I did this at the city council meeting as well. So not new information if you didn't see that. But for twenty twenty-three, we responded to forty-six calls for service. We had four traffic collisions, one DUI, four fights, arguments, that could be where maybe somebody was physical, maybe they were arguing. We get there and we see what we have. And then we had five fireworks calls. So for comparison, in twenty-two, we had forty-nine calls for service, two traffic collisions, one DUI, five fights, zero fireworks, which sets Five fights, zero fireworks, which that's hard to believe. And then in twenty one, we actually had sixty one calls for service, two traffic collisions. Zero DUIs, three fights and eleven fireworks calls. So you can see the calls for service dipped a little bit this year versus previous years. If you look at annual calls for service, this is kind of what we've responded to the last three years. So what I did is twenty twenty three is year to date, so that you can kind of put a reference on it, but. So far this year, we've responded to twenty five hundred and sixty two calls for service. We've investigated fourteen traffic collisions, CD, six DUI arrests. Two hundred and eleven nine one one calls. And sixteen burglaries. Now, the nine one one calls, those are people that. Could be a butt dial on the phone, could be just a mistaken nine one one, but we respond to each one of those. So you can see how many of those we actually respond to. In comparison, in twenty two, we had forty four hundred and nine calls for service, twenty five traffic collisions. Twenty one DUIs, seven hundred and seven nine one one calls. Twenty burglaries. And then the twenty twenty one, forty three hundred seventy six calls for service. Twenty two traffic collisions, twenty three DUIs, eleven hundred and thirty one nine one one calls and twenty two burglaries. Obviously, I can't put every call for service on this, so there's a lot of calls for service in between there, but it could be anything from thefts, arguments. Domestic violence, all that stuff is included in those calls for service. And then lastly, so. I get that everybody lives in a gated community. I don't want to be that there's a false sense of security here. They do their best, they do a great job. But sometimes there's people within the community that will steal from you. Right? So we don't want to leave stuff in our cars. We want to remove the valuables, make sure you lock your doors. Same thing with your house at night, lock your doors of your house, make sure your windows are closed. You want to protect yourself and do everything you can to protect yourself. Perimeter lighting is great, have a porch light on, have floodlight cameras. Floodlights, anything that is a deterrent for criminal activity. Because believe it or not, the bugs like the dark, right? Installing cameras are great because it's a great tool for us. So if you have ring cameras or any of those types of cameras. And you're able to record. The incident that helps us to prove that a crime occurred and then it helps in the prosecution. Neighborhood watch, great tool. I know we were working on implementing it out here. What that is, is basically it's a network, right? You're creating a neighborhood network of observe and report. Sharing phone numbers with each other so that you can keep in communication. Hey, I see somebody at. At your house, are they supposed to be there? No, they're not supposed to be there. Okay, let me call law enforcement, right? Observe and report. That's all that we ask that you do. Share accurate information. So social media, I know we talk about this one all the time, but social media is horrible for sharing accurate information. Okay, so you can't believe everything on social media. It might have occurred, it might not have occurred, we don't know. So be careful with that. And again, report it if there's something that. Just looks suspicious or you're not comfortable with. We're out here, call us, let us come out, let's investigate it. If it's nothing, let us determine that it's nothing. If it's something, let us take it in furtherance, but don't. I would hate to get in the mindset of, oh, we're not going to call them because nothing's going to happen. That's not always the case, but sometimes, yeah, nothing happens because there was no crime, right? I can only prosecute if a crime occurred, not because I suspect they might have occurred or might commit a crime, right? So reporting, so. Again, I know there's a lot of reports of thefts and vandalism. Especially on social media, if if your car is vandalized, if your house is vandalized, if your property stolen, please call us. Let us come out, let us take the report. It helps in crime stats. It helps with my crime analyst, so she can pinpoint where's the locations of all the crimes. Are they at the front gate all the time? If they are, then we can target enforcement there, right? We can step up. We do have tools that we can use. We have cameras that we can deploy, so maybe we could do something in addition to the POA. Lastly, nine one ones are for emergency, non emergency, please call the non emergency line. We will get to you. Seven seven six one zero nine nine.
That's all I have. Can we give the lieutenant the captain a round of applause, please? All right, before we move on to fire, I do want to say that we have our mayor pro tem Del Walty. He's in the back joining us. We have Councilwoman Jennifer Dane, and of course. Mr. Mark Terry is right beside me and we're here and we're excited to be here and public safety has been our number one priority. I'm going to talk a little bit about that. But before we dive into more of that, we're going to hear from our chief. Chief Lieutenant, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Jeff Latander is Canyon Lake Fire Department, your fire chief. As you may recall, in two thousand twenty two, I'm sorry, two thousand twenty one. We were directed by the city council to stand up our own fire department. And we started fire department operations as a Canyon Lake Fire Department on January first of two thousand twenty two. So we've been around for just over eighteen months now. Our staff, all city staff, we have eleven full-time employees. That includes a fire chief. One battalion chief. Three fire captains and two of those fire captains are paramedic. Three fire engineers, two of those fire engineers are also paramedics. Three firefighter paramedics. So what we're trying to do is staff two paramedics on our fire engine each and every day. And then we have fifteen reserve firefighters that are actually volunteers that come in and receive a stipend for their work each and every day. And they're required to do two twenty four hour shifts. So if you look in the back, there's our four person crew that's here working for us tonight, Canyon Lake Engine One.
Thank you guys for being here, by the way. Appreciate you showing up.
Our operations is we're set up for three different shifts and our firefighters begin work at eight o'clock in the morning. And then they work for forty eight hours straight. Then they get four days off. So it's what we call a forty forty eight ninety six shift. And so we have three shifts that are constantly rotating to maintain that same coverage each and every day. A chief officer, myself, or Chief Samuels, the battalion chief, we're on call twenty four seven three sixty five. So when a crew is dispatched and they need a chief officer on scene, one of us is dispatched at the same time in response with them. We're not on duty every day, but we are on call. I work Monday through Thursday, a ten hour day, and Chief Samuels works Tuesday through Friday, a ten hour day. So five days of work, five days a week, we have a chief officer physically here in the city. So for our fire and rescue operations, in addition to our daily staffing, we have automatic and mutual aid agreements with both. Riverside County and the surrounding communities. We have agreements with Corona, Pechanga. We have agreements with Murrieta, Idlewild, Cali Mesa. Saboba Enden Reservation, March Air Force Base, and so we have agreements that. It's reciprocal. If we need help, they will come to our aid, and if they need help, we will go to their aid. And if you watch my monthly presentations, you can see the statistics are fairly balanced between what we give and what we receive. We're out there contributing to the regional fire services here in Western Riverside County. In addition to that, we provide paramedic service. Public education, someone talked about, you know, the sheriff's department and social media. I think one of the greatest success our fire department has is being engaged and becoming a part of this community, and they do it each and every day. And in addition, we do fire prevention, we do the plan checks for any new construction, we go out there and do. New construction inspections and very soon the fire department will be taking over and implementing a business inspection program here in the community. As we look at our emergency responses for Fourth of July, and I gave this presentation last week at the city council meeting. And in this year, we had thirteen emergency responses. Two of those were fires. One of them was at Holiday Harbor and it was fireworks related. The other one was. Undetermined as a cause, but we suspect it was fireworks related because it happened essentially right after the fireworks show. We had four traffic accidents, one involving a golf cart. And one accident resulted in the loss of power to over two hundred homes here in the community. We had seven medical aides at the same time. It was interesting this year during the daytime hours, we were relatively quiet. But during the nighttime hours, right about seven thirty, eight o'clock, our call volume just went crazy. And we staffed up a second four-person paramedic company for the Fourth of July, and our crews were going back to back. Simultaneously, they were on calls together and we did have to call in Cal Fire for two. Calls while we during that period of time, during that eight o'clock to eleven o'clock period of time where we just got slammed call after call after call. In two thousand twenty two, we ran more responses, we ran fifteen. We won ran one firework related incident. We had two traffic accidents and both of those were involving golf carts. We had seven medical aides and five other incidents. We weren't here for two thousand twenty one, and so we don't have good statistics there. But again, on the Fourth of July and during Fiesta Days and Memorial Day weekend, we double our staffing. We go from four people with one person on call to eight people and two people on call in the city the entire time. Our annual calls for service and like the sheriff said, so far this year, we've run five hundred and twenty seven emergency responses. Four hundred and eleven of those have been medical aids or traffic collisions. Of those four eleven twenty seven were traffic accidents. We've run fifteen fires, nine structure fires and two wildland fires. Eighteen service calls and eighty three other type of responses. In two thousand twenty two, or for our first full year in operation. We ran eleven hundred and seven responses. Eight hundred and twenty five medical aides of which fifty nine were traffic accidents. Forty two fires, twenty two of those were structured fires and seven wildland fires. Sixty eight service calls and a hundred and seventy two other incidents. I just want to say that we're proud to be part of this community. We work hard, we're engaged, we have our eye on the future. We're constantly expanding our services and we want to know, we want you to know that we're here to serve you. So thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Well done, Chief. Appreciate that. All right. So what's next? You know, we want to make sure that we have cause and you know, for us, it's it's important that we take the right steps forward. So what have we done? And for those of you who haven't had the opportunity to meet our awesome new city manager, Nicole Daly. She's at the end of this table. She makes us all look incredible. And she was part of this idea of establishing a safety committee. And so the council voted, I believe it was in April or May, to establish a public safety committee, myself and Mark Terry serve on that. And that was the call that call to action. So we are very proud to be able to serve on that, and we've already had a meeting with the POA. So it's in the right direction. You know, we also are looking at a law enforcement and public safety survey, which I'll go into details on that. And we're going to be looking at a community survey because we believe that in order to be as transparent as possible in this community. We can't govern without the rule of the people. We got to make sure that we get your buy-in before we make decisions, which is so important. And also an ongoing collaboration with the Canyon Lake Properties Owners Association. The key point for that, as we talked about tonight, is definitely looking at e-bikes. I think that is a. A big, big movement that the city definitely needs to try to help out as much as we can. But before I take a deep dive in what this law enforcement and public safety survey looks like, I'm going to let. Mark Terry talk a little bit about what we've been doing on our public safety committee and some of the conversations that we've been having.
Thank you, Mayor.
Of course. Sorry, it's.
Good evening.
Stretch budget.
Canyon Lake. Is unlike. Any other community. In Riverside County. To say we are unique is a huge. Understate. As many of you know. Outside the gate. Is different than once you get inside the gate. And that proposes a lot of challenges. And those are challenges that as a city. We need to know what is the best way to move forward. So that is the reason behind initiating a public. Safety. Survey. As a city official. If public safety, your quality of life. Is not. The most important agenda item. Then we're not doing our job correctly. At the end of the day, your quality of life depends on solid public safety. This survey will look at all aspects. It'll look at ways that we can engage with the Property Owners Association. On how we can police our citizens better. How we can look for ways both in fire, code enforcement. Ways that we can. Once again, increase public safety for you. And that is a broad approach. And that broad approach then in turn gives us the information we need. To make improvements. I think when it comes to your public safety, you can't guess that. Does that make sense? We've got to have. The professionals who do this day in and day out. Look at our city and they're going to do so both as a. Municipality as well as our. Property Owners Association. And they are going to provide us with information on how we can move forward in the best direction, in the best interest of you, the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Councilmember. So looking at a more of a deep dive. You know, I was on the council when we had the sheriff's department operated out of the parish station. And I know I say this to the captain all the time, the service that we get. From RSO now coming out of Lake Elsinore has been tremendous and we're so blessed to have that change because we benefited from it substantially. So I'm extremely thankful for the hard work of our men and women. RSO Chad Bianco is doing a phenomenal job in our county. This is an exciting time for for our city council because. You know, we were able to enter into a contract to look at public safety as a whole. We have our own fire department, we have sheriff's department, as most of you learned tonight, we have code enforcement, we also work with BLM. So we need to understand what we can and can't do. Maybe we need to bring on another deputy, maybe we need to look at a different policing model, maybe we need some help. From RSO and look at some ways of dealing with some of the alcoholism that we talked about, doing some DUI programs. So there's some things that need to happen and luckily this firm that we've hired have done this before and they've been able to. Look at a deep dive approach of our community and taken all things in consideration. So. For me, I know I'm extremely excited and my colleagues on council are as well. Councilmember Terry did a good job of why we got where we're at today. When Nicole came on and she started as her city manager, our priority hasn't changed. Public safety is number one. If you go on our website, you'll see that we've come up with ten goals. And that first goal is public safety and which is why we're here tonight, but we can't do it without you, the residents. So we're going to be as transparent as we possibly can as information's coming up. We're excited about this because we're going to be doing a survey throughout the entire community. And hearing your needs and wants and what you think the best safety is for our community, which is going to be crucial. Couple of things were discussed before I pass it over to the POA. E-bikes, we are willing to help out with the POA. Your new director, Jeff Bill's done a phenomenal job putting together a presentation that I think you'll see a little bit of tonight. He did a great job at the last meeting describing that we want to help out as much as we possibly can. In regards to alcohol, we're actually having National Night Out, which is August first, and believe it or not. At Coffee with the Mayor, we had a gentleman come out and he's going to be there doing a breathalyzer test and he's going to do that and show people how they can participate. Show how that works. So we're going to start becoming more proactive on that. So I'm glad you brought those points up tonight. We really appreciate it. The other thing that I want to mention is is. We talked a little bit about a question was asked by Renee in regards to our Railroad Canyon project, our lights project. Business city manager, we're doing all new lights, right? That's part of it. Yes, on what did I say? Did I say Railroad Canyon? Okay, on so on Railroad Canyon, that was a priority, Renee, because you're right, it's been it's been about a year and a half. You know, government moves slow and it makes me so angry, but I will say this. In our patience, we found a way to fully pay for all of renovations without using Canyon Lake dollars. And I think that is the biggest thing. We're able to use gas tax funds, we're able to use other entities, some grants that's that the staff's worked really hard at. So it did take a little bit longer, but we're very thankful that Railroad Canyon is going to get a complete safe lift, a facelift, not just. For cosmetics, but for safety reasons too. So your council's working hard to make that farewell because we had so many accidents and the captain just reached over to me and said, you know, it looks like the. Accidents have reduced a little bit because it was worse, believe it or not. But your council is well aware. I've done a call to action with Mayor Natasha Johnson and Lake Elsinore and along with Bill Zimmerman and Menifee. We're going to try to partner up and see if we can do a sting op all throughout Railroad Canyon, going into Lake Elsinore and Menifee. We're all having the same issues and it's because people are just driving too fast through there. They're hitting speeds of seventy to seventy five miles an hour and we're seeing people getting into accidents because of it. So we will, mark my words, do something about that because it's something important. Anything else did you want to bring up?
No, I think you covered it.
City manager.
Yeah, good. I just I just want to emphasize that the lighting project is part of a grant program. So right now we're working our way through approvals with Caltrans and we have to plan the project and we have to bid the project, which does take time. And interim staff is looking at the median lights that are broken, I think we referenced tonight. And if it financially feasible, meaning we'll probably need them as much after the other project, then we will proceed with repairs.
Yeah.
And then lastly, signal timing. So this is a method that we can use to slow people down. And so we are looking at traffic count and timing currently and seeing if there's changes that can be made at each of the intersections on Railroad Canyon. To slow people down. You probably know some of the communities where you get through one light. And then you can't get through the next slide fast enough, you have to stop. So there's efforts like that that we are exploring as well to try to reduce. The speed on Railroad Canyon.
Are we allowed to take? Well, we're allowed to take questions. We, we have our flock cameras, right, Kevin?
Yeah, Bob, flock cameras.
So, so ju- just to, if you could, if you have a question, if you could come to the table so that people online can also hear the question. To reiterate the question, it was, the question was asked, could you put a light, a camera at the light?
And just because people are online and thank you, President Bill Van Vliet. What the city manager was indicating that there could be a time delay just because grant money's coming in. And so that project is, was, was we're working through it. But one of the questions from the residents was cameras. And I just was talking to the captain. Do you want to talk about? Yeah, talk about our, our flock cameras.
So the flock cameras that we currently have, they're actually like license plate readers. So we can actually monitor the traffic in and out. And it'll report to us vehicles that are stolen, license plates that are stolen. We have that ability now. I think you're referencing like red light cameras. Yeah, we're getting rid of, I mean, I think most cities have gotten rid of those.
Correct.
So, yeah.
It's unconstitutional is what they deem.
You want to be stopped by an officer, not by a camera and then get a citation in the mail, right? So there's pros and cons to that. But yeah, they're, those are all going away. A fake one?
Yeah. Okay, lastly, we wanted to make sure that, again, one of the biggest things is what's the difference between the city and the P O A? So we put a little connect with us page up here. There's where we're at on Facebook and Instagram. And you can see obviously sheriff's department and the fire department too. Most of you do a phenomenal job at finding us on social media and we try to respond in, in a very quickly manner. But there's our social media pages. We're here to serve you and thank you everyone for coming out and we'll obviously answer any questions that come forward. Yes, Mr. Councilmember.
You know, one of the things that the sheriff brought up, and I believe that we can proactively take an approach as a city, and that is crime prevention. I don't think we do enough of it. How many people get frustrated when they are on social media? And someone says, my car got broken into and I called the P O A. Right? It's, it's having that understanding of who to call per the issue. And I thought I saw an outline in your presentation, which I think will be very helpful. But I will commit to you that as a city, immediately we're going to start doing PR programs along with our sheriff. And get this information to you and get it to you consistently to assist our residents in knowing who to call for what situation. I think it's a great idea. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mayor Smith, Councilman Terry. Also, I want to thank Lieutenant Edwards and Chief Latendras. I really appreciate showing the data. Because data tells the story oftentimes and, and, and in doing that, we can dive down and see what's happening where, and that allows us to shape our responses. And so thank you for, for sharing that information and doing it. Mayor Smith, you mentioned that, that public safety is your top objective. And I know one of the things at our board meeting last week that we, we rolled out five primary goals for our, for our new board. And tonight we were actually touching on three of those. One is engaging the public and another one is, is improving our community security. And the third one is improving our relationship with the city. And so I know, and we're connecting at multiple levels. I think the mayor and I talk, it seems like every day on things. And so we are to make sure we can bring the resources of the community together and also our city manager, Nicole Daly, her counterpart is Eric Gazakoff, our general manager, they are counterparts. And I know they have a very good and strong relationship. And so together we are ensuring that we again, bring, bring both authorities to, to address these problems. So thank you. With that, let's, so let's, we talked about the, the city responsibilities and so forth. Now let's talk about the P O A and what resources we have and what we do. And so again, where it starts off with for us is community patrol. And recognize their primary responsibilities are shown on this slide. Again, access control at the gates. That's number one, right? Enforcement of our, of our rules and regulations is another one. Patrolling the security and doing security checks at our amenities is another one. We, we, we beef that up for special events and traffic control. Also, when during holidays, we will, we will add extra people at the gates for access control at the gates. And there's, and their primary again accountability is observation reporting to the, to the Canyon Lake P O A. If it's outside of that, it is the responsibility of the sheriff, right? And so if you have anything, if there's a suspicious person, if there's, if there's someone that's, that's broken into your car, if there's a stolen vehicle or, or anything like that. In addition to the major crimes, right, of arson and things like that, that's all call nine-one-one in an emergency. And so when in doubt, do that. Make sure that you, you, you call the sheriff or nine-one-one at any emergency. So that's primarily what our community patrol is responsible for. Just to let everyone know, the contract we have with the community patrol goes for three years. We are going to be doing a new contract next year and we'll be evaluating multiple options for that. That'll come in two, in two thousand and twenty-four. The other part is, is the patrol we have on the lake. That's our marine patrol. And so they, they assist with non-emergency issues. Again, if there's an emergency in any, any point going on, contact, not call nine-one-one. If there's a fire on a boat, I'll call, call nine-one-one, the fire department will come. If there's a, if a boat are distressed, I know the first boat I had, I think I took it out eighteen times, nine times I made it back under my own power. And nine times I, I called marine patrol and was graciously brought back. I since have gotten a new boat, but that's, that's who to call in, in that case. They do boat safety inspections as you get in. They also, if you take your boat out and come back in to, to make sure you don't have quagga muscles, they will do those, those inspections. And they will do speeding and they will do wake enforcement on that. Again, so those are the primary responsibilities of our, of our marine patrol. So again, who are you going to call, right, in emergency? Want, can, cannot emphasize this enough is, is, as the mayor said, or Councilman Terry said, this seems like we spend most of our time. When you, who to call is really shown on this slide. Call community patrol for traffic sign violations because there are roads for, if you see vandalism to common areas, suspicious people or vehicles, that actually goes on both sides. Parking violations, motorcycle riding in the community, underage golf cart driving, loud noises, barking dogs, illegal fishing, that's all community patrol. Riverside Sheriff's Department, nine-one-one, again, traffic accidents, any vandalism to your private property. That's, that's actually a sheriff's department. Major crimes, homicide, rape, robbery, theft, et cetera, aggravated assault, motor vehicle theft, that's all. And, and public intoxication, those are all the sheriffs. So when in doubt, this, I wish we could have these, these slides near all of our phones because that's, that's who to call. Okay, so we, we, we had a lot of talk last week about e-bikes, right? I'd say kind of half of our concerns that we heard were e-bikes and, and concerns about the holidays, right? Holiday overcrowding and so forth. So we're going to dive into those a little bit more depth. First of all, let's start off with what are our current e-bike regulations and also we'll talk about California law and so forth. So these are the, the three different class, well, I guess there's four classes of bikes, three classes of e-bikes. The good old fashioned pedal bike is, is what we all, many of us grew up with. Class one is a, is, is a, it can go no faster than twenty miles an hour. It is, a helmet is required for anyone under eighteen. By California law, there is no age restriction, under eighteen, okay? And so, but it is recommended that all ages, ages use that. Class two is, is a throttle assist, so it's a pedal assist. It can assist up to twenty miles an hour. Again, there's no minimum age on that, but a helmet is required under, under eighteen. Class three can go up to twenty-eight miles an hour. That's more than the seven hundred and fifty watt in motor. And, and right now, that is, those are not allowed in Canyon Lake. Okay, the minimum age for that is sixteen. There are some parents that are considering buying tight bike, electric bikes for their kids and so forth. And now one, one comment I want to make is recognize, excuse me, if you, if you purchase a class three bike for your twelve-year-old, you're putting them on a moped. Without, without necessarily knowledge of the rules of the road and such. So it's really important that we, we again, focus on what is the right class of vehicle for, for your family and individual. Current rules. You, the bike, it has to be a bicycle equipped with pedals and pedal assist. Can't go more than sit twenty miles an hour and, and has to have an electric motor of seven hundred and fifty watts. If that is violated, it's a violation, violation starts at a hundred dollars and it can escalate to five hundred dollars. Signs and signals, everyone must stop for school bus signals, everyone, cars, bikes, e-bikes, golf carts. Violate, if you violate that, it's a hundred, it's a hundred dollar violation. Everyone has to stop at a stop sign. Again, bikes, e-bikes, golf carts, everyone has to stop at a, at a stop sign. Our violation, that is a hundred dollars and you can't cross over the double yellow line as well. So as you, as you're coming out of some of our gates, if it's a double yellow solid line, you're not allowed to, to cross over that and the violation for that is fifty dollars. Other ones, safety, so no al- open alcohol containers or possession by minors. And that applies to golf carts and all other vehicles and that's prohibited. Again, violation fine is a hundred dollars on that. Any type of speeding or contest going on or exhibition of speed, that's prohibited and it starts at two hundred and goes to six hundred. Helmets, under eighteen. Under eighteen, the, and all riders under eighteen have to have a helmet. And that is for all vehicles, bicycles, skateboards, scooters, bike trailers. Restraining seat, if you have a bike with a, with a child carrier behind it, you have to have a helmet on that and them as well. Next line. So we mentioned that at our last meeting, Director Bill proposed an e-bike program. And so this is coming and coming very soon. In fact, it'll be going to our, our two committees. The, our, our security committee in next week, I believe. And also to our rules committee that next week, tomorrow night. All committees, by the way, are open to the public. If you would like to attend, you are, you're certainly welcome to attend those meetings. So we're, we're talking about developing a new program and Glenn, to a lot of your comments, the program will have a registration program. It'll enhance safety and it will have, it'll, it'll enable safety training. And so we're going to require users who, who have an e-bike and to do an online training course. Not unlike we do for boater registration, right? And there'll be a registration element to it. In the registration, we will verify what class of vehicle it is and, and then go forward with that. And so all e-bike owners in the community now and in the future will be required to register their e-bikes with this. And so in order to do that, you're going to have to take an online safety course. And like, like with the boater, boating program, you're going to have to pass it. You have to get a passing grade. Once they are, once we, they're registered and inspected and all the approved bikes will get a decal. And, and put on it such that they can be easily identified by our, by other members and community control. So these are elements that are coming prop within the next month or so. Guest management, this is the second area that was of a lot of concern to members. And so one of the, let's talk about what we currently do with guest management. First off, like the city did, yeah, go ahead. Like, like the city did, these are the statistics on guest management, guests that were called in for the last five years. And wow, that's really small for me to see from here. So I'm going to go to a hard copy. So this year, we had four thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven guests called in on, on the fourth of July. Last year we had four thousand seven hundred and twenty. The prior year we had four thousand nine hundred and forty-five. The year before that, in two thousand and twenty, it was four thousand four hundred and seventy-six. And in two thousand and nineteen, it was four thousand nine hundred and thirty-six. So all around forty-seven hundred to five thousand people. That is quite a few guests to let, and if you put that in perspective, if you figure there's an average of three people in the car per, per vehicle, that basically doubles the size of our, of our population on the fourth of July. So it is quite a bit. While it's a lot, it, it also says over the last five years, it hasn't really changed substantially in terms of numbers. So we're not dealing with a substantial increase, but it's a large amount that we want to try and do a better job on. So tools that you have to manage the guest list now. First of all, we have a permanent guest list. Can I see a show of hands? How many people have a permanent, have members on the permanent guest list? Okay, good. We allow up to how many? Is it six? Six people on your permanent guest list? The last time we refreshed this was two thousand and eighteen. So five years ago. It's time for us to, at a minimum, to go through and, and change it. So we're going to, starting on September first, we're going to flush it. It'll be gone. It, it will, you'll still be able to put people on. You'll either be able to do it through Dwelling Live, using the Dwelling Live app, or you can go into member services and have to put them on. Generally, what's that, that's intended for is for family members. I know in my personal case, we've got three kids, two are married. And so it's our, it's our family members who are on it. But there is some belief and some concern that perhaps the, the permanent guest list has been abused. And so that's why we're going through and recommending that we should refresh the list. So that's going to happen by September first. Service providers, we had a lot of talk last week about service providers. And a lot of concerns that people are saying, geez, you know, I see my gardener on the beach or I see people doing things that, that don't live here. And while we don't have the specific data on that, it is certainly a concern. And so know that your service provider, that's someone who provides temporary services. It can be someone who does, does your lawn. It can be someone who, who, who cleans your house. It can be someone who, who you have a, a water leak that needs to be fixed or your air conditioning is not working, God forbid, right now. It can also be food, food delivery. It can be pizza delivery. It can be furniture deliveries. It can be Ubers. It can be all of those. Those are all service providers. When you call them in and you need, and you use Dwelling Live, you can check, is it a guest or a, or a service member? We please make sure that when you put them in, you say that it's a service provider. Because when you do that, they are limited to ten days, ten days of access. If you put them on a guest, it can go, you can put a guest on, on the list for up to a year. Okay, so we want to make sure that we keep them limited. The other reason is they, they are limited, yes, a service providers are not able to use our, our amenities. Okay, so it's important that the member knows to classify them correctly as you call in guests. Okay, now we're going to talk about, again, we heard, we heard a lot from the community last Monday. In fact, the response was, was overwhelming. Again, it's, we see it as a call to action for, for all of us. Thank you. Thank you for taking the time. Thank you for, for coming in. We had almost two hundred people here. We had a hundred and twenty-six or so online. So it was a record turnout for us. And I want you to know, we, we both have heard you loud and clear. We appreciate all the people that took the courage to speak in public. It's not something that everyone does. And so twenty-one people provided public comments that took an hour and ten or minutes or so. There are twenty-five additional people that sent in their comments and letters and recommendations to the board. I think what was really best about what we saw from, from that, besides the concern that we heard was we really appreciate the, the attitude and the spirit of, of, of cooperation that we, we heard from the community. There were thirty-two total constructive comments and recommendations offered on things that you think we should do better. And so again, we appreciate that, that feedback and so forth. And so we took all thirty-two of those, those comments that you had, whether they're, they were delivered in person or you gave them to us online or in an email. And we, we put them down into four categories. And I'm going to talk about some of the things that we are considering doing in each of these categories, under e-bikes, under guest management, under amenity overcrowding, crowd control and police and our community patrol presence. So tomorrow night, at our rules committee, we are proposing some new rules. And we're asking the rules to review, to review the, the options for them. And, and the committee is made up of other members like you. How many members, Alex? Nine, seven? Seven members. And so we're asking them for feedback on things. There might be additional, we might require additional helmets. We might require flags. Like golf carts, golfers have a whip, we're required to have a whip. We may consider having, having flags on bikes. We may require having lights. Not all bikes are sold with lights, but you can certainly add lights and reflectors. Again, it's a safety item to have. Another rule to consider is one rider per seat. I know we've gotten a lot of feedback from the community that they say, I've seen three kids on a bike. Actually, I heard in one case, there were three kids on a bike holding another bike, which is kind of crazy. But again, it's, it's really about safety and doing the right thing. So one rider per site, per seat. Another one is reckless behavior or reckless driving. Is it safe to ride down the street, down the middle of the street, doing a wheelie? Well, if you don't have your front wheel on the, on the ground, you don't have control of your vehicle. And so many of us would say that's not, that's not consistent. But we're looking at that. Also decal, we're talking, as part of the registration program, we'll get a decal. Where's the decal location? What does it look like? And those are all things that, that our rules committee will be evaluating and providing comment back to the board. Well, right now, good, good. Well, right now, well, that's one of the things we can, the rules committee can consider, but we are, right now, we are, so the question is, what about age limits? And I, in fact, I have the California law up here. And right now for bicycles, type one, class one vehicles and class two vehicles, there is no limit under eighteen. They are required to wear a helmet, but not. Now that said, again, we're, we're going to require that there is a safety training. They have to pass a safety test. So we're going to at least require the parents to take them through that, make sure they understand the rules of the road and have to go through that certification. So at least there will be that element of it, but there's still, at least we are not currently proposing an age limit. Now, that said, we do not allow class. At least we are not currently proposing an age limit. Now, that said, we do not allow class three bikes either, so they will be limited to twenty miles an hour. Question, if you have a question, come on up. This is a good time to engage because these are proposed rules. If you have a question in the back, please come, just raise your hand and come forward. Tom, Kevin, or. Just state your name, please.
Thomas Bowman. Um I I'm an avid cyclist and I've been. As since I became one fifteen years ago, uh in about four serious accidents. And um. Uh I don't think any of them were really my fault. Um but when you're on a bike, you you will have accidents. And um so I I just wanna talk about a few of the things that that make a difference. So. A MIPS helmet is 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 a must-have if you're cycling all the time. That that's the kind of helmet. That will um protect you, your brain from injury in in an impact. Um so you need a a a newer helmet. If you're using a twenty-year-old helmet, you should get rid of it and buy a new one. Second is lights. Um I know that cyclists generally um don't use lights very much. Um I I use a flashing light on the back of my bike. I also have. Helmet lights in the front and the back, that that flash. Um that makes a tremendous difference as well. Um and um I also have a horn, uh an electric horn on on my bicycle. So I can warn that I'm on my way um in somewhere and uh that that will help protect you. Uh I also want to mention that. Cyclists that do a lot of cycling, they know that if they come within three feet. Of a car door, they're at risk of death. Because not just hitting the car door, but swerving away from the car door into traffic and getting run over. This is a common accident. It causes the death of cyclists, and that is why we don't ride in the gutter. Or right next to cars. And so if you're driving next to a cyclist, don't get mad and don't get close to them. Because they're away from the cars, car doors, because they need to do that to be safe. So thank you.
Thank you, Tom. What type of helmet was that again, Tom? MIPS, the the type of helmet? I don't know if people thought that.
M I P S, MIPS.
Thank you. Kevin, did you have a comment?
There thirty-eight, sixty-eight, five oh seven. Uh you've mentioned a couple of times, class three e-bikes are on. Okay, in Canyon Lake, well, we're not, I don't agree with that. We there's a shortage of class three bikes. In Canyon Lake, class three bike, first of all, California was the first one to classify bikes, and the federal government classifies by class three bike. Is pedal assist to uh to twenty-eight mile or to twenty miles an hour, but it can go twenty-eight miles an hour. So I'm not saying we should or shouldn't have either one, but you keep saying they're not allowed in Canyon Lake. Well, you you did mention you put the law out there, which is great. So it's sixteen and older. Which obviously these young kids that aren't sixteen are riding the class three. That's California law. This is Canyon Lake. I think people get confused. We can kind of do what we want in Canyon Lake, and I'm not advocating for one or the other. Um there's no shortage of those, these really expensive bikes in use right now. The Super Seventy-three is one. They've got it. I don't know how they get around it. They've got a mode where it's. Class two, and then you can change it to class three, and they're they're all over the place. Uh just if maybe you could explain why you keep saying that class threes aren't allowed, because they are here. Maybe that's something we need to look at.
It is uh, we we only permit class one and class two currently.
But the you just had the rule up there. It said seven fifty uh watts, and that is the federal. So over seven fifty is considered a motor vehicle, below is seven fifty is is an electric bike. I just, I would like some clarification, because it is, they are seven fifty or lower, and they do go twenty-eight. Again, I'm not advocating for one or another, but there's no shortage of these expensive bikes out there in use right now. That's all I wanted to say. Maybe you could clarify why you're saying that class threes are not okay in Canyon Lake, because you read the rule up there and it. It's just motor size, which again is federal. Anything over seven fifty, below seven fifty is considered an electric bike, below above that's a motor vehicle.
So go ahead, next.
Good evening. Thank you very much for allowing us to come and have this dialogue. I want to appreciate the the city uh for bringing uh data to the table today. To kind of illustrate the problems that we're having and the solutions that are coming forward. Um I'd like to engage a little bit on a couple of topics from the POA's perspective. Uh twenty-seven years and here inside the can inside of Canyon Lake, I've seen a lot, uh come and go, change, good and bad. Um I think some of the things that I just, I haven't seen any data tonight. You know, the city brought data in preparation tonight. Um President Van Fleet, are there, is there any data from our security team that you're able to share this this evening?
The data we have is is we bought forth was the data on the fourth of July.
That's just people coming to the gate. What I'm talking about, uh responses by our patrol, marine patrol, community patrol. You you said you there's you have a slide on what is the responsibility of our POA security and what is the responsibility of our city partners? Um I haven't really seen any data as it relates to violations, like for example, it says violation fine starts at a hundred dollars. How many violations have we had in viola? How many, how many actually citations have been given by our security?
If I could respond to that one.
Certainly.
So I would recommend every month at our regular board meeting, we put out monthly reports that cover the statistics for both community and marine patrol. Now, they don't cover every single violation that's committed, but it's like a broad summary. It's very informative. Off the top of my head, I believe last month, community patrol issued about five hundred total citations. So that's any POA rule violation. So we do publish that monthly. We don't have it up tonight.
But tonight's a security workshop, I think, you know, where city brought it, I think would have been prudent to be able to have that dialogue. So we can talk about the number of safety violations um pursuant to helmets. Uh speed, whatever, having that that data disaggregated a little deeper, so we can actually hot highlight what the true problem is. I think that's an interest of the community um at large. Again, uh I know there's a a lot of grievances regarding the quality of our security. And I don't know if that's one of the pieces that we're talking about. It's inconsistent or incomplete data that's being reported. But I think of the interest of the party that was here last week as well as tonight. I think we're not necessarily just worried about the rules that you want to impart, but it's really about the enforcement and the intent of the rules that you have for.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate the comment. And that is, again, in our monthly board meetings, we do have, we do have the data available. It's in the board package every time. We did not present it this time, just because of the scope of the of what we are addressing tonight.
I appreciate.
That we can, we can address that. And in fact, let um as um we said earlier, we last April, the last time we did was April. We uh we did an update on all of our statistics on having to do with security. Uh and and that we agreed that would be a good thing to do on a on a bi- bi-annual basis.
Yeah, you know, when I first moved into Canyon Lake, one of the um most poignant pieces for us busy folks who can't necessarily always get to POA meetings. What it was in the Friday flyer. And of course, at some point in time, that was redacted from uh the paper. Um and I I can sure, I can understand uh pros and cons to that. Um but as I uh kind of did dive deeper into the need for security, this ongoing education to our community about what is taking place. And that would include vandalism. Um but also the violations by guests. How, what are the violations look like by guests? I know I've been, I've received a violation from my daughter um several years ago, because one of her friends came in and was speeding. I paid that bill. Again, I I think we more more information to this community on an ongoing basis that will highlight the ins and outs of what's taking place. I think um you know, we are all, you know, if we want to increase engagement, we need to uh really learn about our community. Of what the current events are and what's taking place. And I think this would also include the burden of Airbnbs. Um in our community, because again, that is another issue that we need to have. And so I appreciate your guys' time and your the opportunity we have tonight to engage in this meaningful dialogue.
Yeah, thank you. Those are great comments.
Can I can I address the Airbnb comment?
Yeah, we'll let Mayor Smith, actually, the Airbnb is a city issue, so we're gonna let Mayor Smith address that.
Thank you for bringing that up. Airbnbs was a huge issue um about a year or so ago. It's actually now a misdemeanor if you have an Airbnb in Canyon Lake. Um we don't do short-term rentals here. Um at a time, we had about twenty-four of them. We get the report daily, and now we have none. Some will pop up every now and then, so I urge.
Looked at today, there's one today.
Perfect. Please send it to our code enforcement, because they're all over it. So we've made it a very serious notion to make sure that we're on top of our Airbnbs. Appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to piggyback too off of what the mayor said, the POA, we also have our own short-term rental rule. And our planning and compliance department also monitors a few of the common websites and will send violation notices to them.
Any other comments on e-bikes? We can stay, because we have more more topics on to get to yet tonight. So if you can just, if we can just come, if you're coming forward, please. Let's talk about e-bikes at the for the moment.
Yeah, just gonna keep it towards the e-bikes. I think um we kind of need to be careful with this. I feel like. We're in a new era. I'm thirty-five, my kid's six. I have little kids. We're in a time today where there is a massive gap of kids actually riding bicycles. I I race motorcycles. They have people that bring bicycles for free to these kids, because we're losing kids engaging in. Actual real life to video games, time wasting, stuff like that. So on one hand, I understand, I get. Like I said, I race motorcycles. I'm into all that stuff. It is annoying watching some of these kids, how they do ride. I feel like what we're doing is great to do classes and stuff like that. I kind of feel like. Maybe this should be, if the California law is sixteen and under, maybe we should kind of focus the laws towards sixteen-year-old kids. I kind of feel like if you're an adult and you have a seven hundred and fifty watt bike, like my car can go a hundred miles an hour. I know not to go a hundred miles an hour in the community, right? Maybe this should be just a sixteen and under kind of thing. I definitely don't agree with having. An age limit to these kids riding bikes. I feel like if they're a good riding able kid, they should be able to ride whatever they want in here. I do agree they should adhere to the rules. They should be enforced. But I feel like it's kind of a slippery slope, because if we kind of overdo it, this is kind of all of the freedom these kids get. So that's all.
Thanks for your comment. Chuck.
Chuck Moreno. I'm repeating this from a friend that doesn't want to speak tonight. He lives on Longhorn. And um he called me one day and he said, hey, man, some idiot plowed into the back of my neighbor's truck on an e-bike. He said, I was looking out the window and I watched it happen. He said he had to be going thirty-five, forty miles an hour. He said it hit so hard that it dented the chrome bumper and tailgate on the Chevy pickup. I guess it's a classic truck or something. The guy's femur was sticking out eight to nine inches from his leg, I guess. He said, the idiots, he was racing in a golf cart, threw his bike in the golf cart and took off with the guy. The neighbor called the fire station, POA, surrounding hospitals, and couldn't find out who he was. His truck is still messed up to this day. That was July of last year. I just thought I'd add injury to insult on this uh e-bike thing, so thank you.
Hey, thanks, Chuck. Anyone else on e-bikes? We have still more to go. Okay, let's let's go a little further, maybe a few more comments on e-bikes. So other, so these are the proposed rules so far. Well, looks like we had some coming forth.
Does that work? Okay, good.
Press the button again and state your name, please.
Oh, my name is Mike Reed. Um I don't have my jacklats over off of Kobe. So the e-bike thing. Um today, I had witnessed uh one kid coming down the clawsway. I was doing about approximately about thirty-one miles an hour. This kid come by me flying. Now, he was up and over the clawsway, probably doing about thirty-five. One single bike. Now, this is not the normal e-bikes that we see. This is one of the motocross-looking e-bikes. Those have nine fifty motors in them, and they fly. So that would be considered a motorcycle. So there's that. Um the second thing. On the safety. I think the board should have a safety class, meaning. These kids need to know how to use hand signals. We all had to do this when we got our driver's licenses, didn't we? But we forgot about that. But they should learn what this does, what that does, and what this does. But they don't. They don't have blinkers on those bikes. They don't have. Brake lights, okay? Those are things that need to be.
We're recommending to.
Okay, golf carts. Kids underage. Many over the weekend of fourth of July, multiple. Okay, they have to have a driver's license, period. Okay, that's California law. Right? Um the motorcycle thing, like the one lady said um earlier. About the bikes being out in the front, the east gate, the north gate. You have these covers. When you pull in there, do you like seeing that? Do you like seeing the covers of the bikes, with the little shell things that they put over their motorcycle, so they're not seen from the road? You pull into the main gate, and if you look to the left, you see all those metal.
Motorcycle parking.
Right, motorcycle parking, okay? Now, do you like seeing that? That makes the community look really ugly. Okay, either put a block wall up, put a gate with a transponder of some sort. They get to park the bikes that they're not seeing, or like she said, be able to go from point A to point B. You can't go over to your buddy's house over in Longhorn, and you live over off of vacation north. Can't do that. You should be able to ride your motorcycle. And this rule is fifty years old. That was in the rulebook. Fifty years. That's a long time. People have changed. Things have changed. And I think that needs to be looked at. Times have changed. We've all changed. So that's my honest thoughts on it. We should be able to ride our motorcycles. I ride motorcycles. I also raced motorcycles for twelve years. So if I buy a bike, I want to be able to take it home, but I have a pass. That means I get a decal. I think on our. The rental agreements, if you're renting a home, there's a thing that says a motorcycle pass. Well, they don't issue them.
We're we're gonna speak a little bit later about motorcycles. I hear your comments on that. Um and we'll talk about that in a little bit. Right now, I want to try and finish the e-bike discussion.
Okay.
And then get to the other.
But like I said, on the e-bike thing, yeah, they need to have a safety test. Okay, no different than the boating's test. They need to have a bicycle test. And if they have to go on and do it like they do a motorcycle, and you gotta ride around in a circle, and you gotta show control of the bike, and you need to know hand signals. Not online, in person. In person. That means somebody needs to do their job.
Thank you.
And handle it.
We we hear you coming. Thank you. Okay, let's let's finish the e-bike portion of the presentation, and then we'll take any final comments on e-bikes. There are some additional rules that we are proposing. And again, they're common sense, they're rules of the road. Cyclists should have to yield the right of way to any and all pedestrians. And again, you have to ride with care. Don't weave in and out of traffic. Don't ride down the median or the middle center lane. Uh and be away of all all other road users. Now, we talked a lot about rules. There is one recommendation that came forward that was going around a bit on social media. A number of people, other additional people uh wrote in and provided this. And that is, you know, we don't want to just just be all about rules. We also want to provide some positive reinforcement as well. And Temecula implemented a program when they caught kids uh wearing their helmets that was uh that they rewarded them with a gift card. And so we are considering implementing a program where we will, we will also uh reward children for. For following the rules, for driving well, for wearing helmets and so forth. In fact. To date, we have had three people, three families say they are willing to donate to this program to provide gift cards. For the uh for the to hand out, for community patrol to hand out to the kids. They can use it to go buy a drink, a snack, an ice cream at one of our local convenience stores or somewhere else. So something that's under consideration. To to do not only the uh the the infractions, but also provide some positive reinforcement to reinforce good behavior. Okay, with that, and let's before we get to guest management, any other remaining comments? Okay, with that, and let's, before we get to guest management, any other remaining comments on e-bikes that anyone would like to raise now is probably the best time? No? Okay, any, any, uh, board members want to offer any comments about e-bikes? We've covered it. Okay, guest management. So again, these are, in addition to the things that we're already doing, these are things that we feel were good recommendations that were provided by the community. Um, and they have to wait. Again, there's pros and cons to a lot of these things. We have to value with them. Um, one is potentially limited number of guests call-ins per member on, on summer holidays, on prime summer holidays. A second one is to require guests to have members be present with their ID card at all amenities. Right now, we acquire them at the pool. You have to, you, all guests are allowed. They have to be with a member. They have, the member has to present an ID card. And each member can bring up to six people. Uh, and so it's also required at the pickleball courts. And so one of the suggestions from some of our members were. Maybe let's, let's have that be required at all of our amenities. Other suggestions came in saying perhaps as we get approved guests, they go through, um, issue the guest wristbands that has the members information on them. Such that if there is an incident that comes up, they're caught doing something and for some reason the member doesn't have to be with them at the moment. There's some additional identification we consider. Uh, guest reentry. Right now, when you call someone in, they can come in, they come out, they have a pass for the whole time. Um, one of the, one of the suggestions that was offered was perhaps on holiday weekends, we limit, uh, guest entry to, to come in once. If you leave, you do not get to re-enter. Maybe we'll call it the Hotel California rule. Service providers, we're talking a lot, we're looking hard at what options we might have for service providers. Uh, we may consider. Restricting service provider access on holiday weekends. That may cut down with the flow, may cut down on the number that are required. But we recognize that also has consequences. If you have a water leak, if you have, if you want to have, if you want to call an Uber in. Because you've been drinking and you, we want to get a ride home. There are other things, there are other consequences. We have to think about that. And it's one, we'll take all of those under consideration. But good suggestion. Again, we feel these are all good suggestions that were offered. Um, the other, another recommendation was perhaps we should offer color-coded passes that differentiate guests and service providers. And along those lines, uh, when they get the pass, make sure that the guests, uh, the, some of the rules and the consequences are communicated. On the access pass. I know our members are supposed to know that they are responsible for their guests. And if the guests have an infraction, the member is held accountable. Some members, some of our members requested that we reinforce that with, with the guests as well. On overcrowding. Uh, everyone who is at, uh, was anyone here at Sunset Beach this week, last week? Last Fourth of July? No one. One, two? Okay, good. Thank you. Three, four? Good. Um, Holiday Harbor likewise. So one consideration that was, that was offered is, uh, consider enforcing capacity limits. That counts. Another one that was offered is consider having a venue for families only. And in those venues, there is no alcohol allowed. Other considerations were limit parking at the lodge and or Holiday Harbor and or Indian Beach to members only. Other things were offered in terms of looking at the lodge and Sunset Beach and Holiday Harbor, which were very crowded. Um, perhaps have a gated access, limit access to it and require people who can go in to be with a member that has POA card for the entry. Another consideration was perhaps look into having a lottery system. Uh, like we did during COVID, we had beach, we plotted out the beach and had people, we, we spaced them for, uh, for safe spacing. But perhaps we have, we have beach plots at Holiday Harbor and or the lodge like, and have a lottery like we do at Happy Camp. And limit the number of people per site. On a personal note, I, uh, last weekend I happened to be babysitting my grandkids. And my, my son lives in Mission Viejo and he has a, uh, they, they have a lake Mission Viejo there. And just by chance, I happened to look at the flyer. And the flyer says, here's, here's our things that we do. And by the way, some of the things that are being, that were recommended by our members are, are on this sheet and things that other communities do as well. So not all of these are reinventing the wheel. We're, we're learning best practices from other communities as well. And then the last one from overcrowding, again, just streamlined gate access. I know that's hard as people come in and, and, and it's a busy time. Uh, but we're, we have some measures and we can look at other measures to continue to streamline gate access. Under Sheriff, uh, and or Community Patrol, these are recommendations from the members that we. We believe the board thinks are worthy of, of further consideration. We'll certainly discuss and evaluate them. Increase the presence to provide a continuous presence at the three major beaches on, on major summer holidays. Implement DUI checkpoints on the roads and on the lake, things we're talking about perhaps with the city. Extend the, the duration of the lights at the parks. Right now, the lights go off at a certain time. Perhaps extend those times, uh, during, uh, holidays and or weekends. In the summer. Add cameras at Holiday Harbor, Sunset Beach, Indian Beach, where many of our issues occur. Uh, Bill, and we heard this Sydney, uh, we heard you, uh, build us a secure motorcycle parking area with, with security camera coverage. That is, um, sorry? Well, driving home requires a change of our CC and hours. That will require devote two-thirds of the people. And in the past, that's come up a couple of times. It just, not, not that I'm saying for against, but it, we've, we've never, we've never been able to cross that, that voting threshold. So until that can be addressed, and I, we certainly heard the comment that, that, uh, there's some desires to do that. Until that can be addressed, one of the things at least we can do is look at creating a secure motorcycle parking area with, uh, with coverage. And perhaps access control. There have been some people that raised issues about esport parking that there's some, people do burnouts and things that I get in the park, uh, in the parking lot there. And the last thing is what I want to do is again, to discourage bad behavior is double or triple all fines on holiday weekends. So would anyone like to come forward on any of those other subjects, either guest management, access control, overcrowding, or sheriff and or community patrol? Please come forward and just raise your hand and come forward. So we got one here first, then next.
I'll get this. By the time this is done, I'll get it all. Sorry, guys. Lindsay, uh, Lindsay Clark again. Just on the touch on the guest management, I know that there have been, uh, numerous times that I've had guests call in that. We're never here. Uh, my uncle's been called in numerous times and he lives in Oceanside and he's actually now deceased and he's been called in. So I find that interesting. Um, I've had my husband's ex-wife, who we have restraining order against be allowed in with no pass, no call-in, no anything. Um, there's safety issues. I went today to get a pass for my brother's truck because I'm watching while he's on deployment. Not an ID check, not in anything. They asked me what my, my address was and here's your pass. This is not okay. This is a security problem. They're supposed to be, the rules state, correct me if I'm wrong, from our illustrious. Community patrol, they're supposed to check a driver's license against the person that's called in a picture ID against who's called in. At the gate and it is never done. Not once has my mom ever had an IV, any of our friends had, hadn't had an ID. It's a problem. And that might be leading to what part of the issues and, and. Problems that we're having, um, on these holiday weekends and other times. Um, it's something that I feel like maybe if our community patrol knows the rules and follows the rules. We might actually not get cited for things that we didn't do wrong. I've been cited for not having a decal on my motorcycle. When I did, I have a picture of the fact that I did, took it to the Bluebird Hall and they had no idea what it was or why I even had on my bike. It's a problem. Our guys, if they're going to enforce the rules, they need to know the rules. Thanks.
So I, I'd like to offer a comment to that. And that is, I know our, and Amanda, feel free to comment. I know we do go through quite a bit of training. Uh, but we also deal with people and with humans and humans aren't perfect in their mistakes. Where you see these occurrences happening, and we've heard, we've gotten lots of letters from people with comments. Hey, I go through and the, the arm was up and they let multiple cars through. Where you see these incidences, please, please call and report. Because I know Amanda Moore is, is responsible for, senior manager responsible for community patrol and, and guest services. She meets with, with them every single week. She meets with manager of Allied. And in that they go through the, where things have slipped up and gone wrong and, and they're held accountable. If you do not, if you do not report it, we don't have the data to hold them accountable. And so please, can, please do that.
I've called and reported. I've gotten security laughing in my face and I've been told, oh, well, sorry. Literally just like that from our security at Bluebird Hall. This is not, okay.
So I'd like to request, and if anyone experiences this, ever put it on Facebook, share it with your friends. Please report it directly to me at the POA. They're our contractor. So if you are feeling that their service is not adequate, that's what I need to look into. So if it's not reported to me, um, not that, that those mistakes are condoned. But there is a huge volume of guests coming through all of our gates every single month. Mistakes are going to happen. I cannot work to reduce those if they're not reported. And oftentimes I hear people say, oh yeah, this happens all the time. I keep record and I don't ever see where it's been reported. So it's really helpful. The security at all the gates. Um, we want to make it as secure as possible. So if you can report anything like that. Uh, hey, this person, I just got notified that they were given access, but I know that they're in Florida.
Yeah, we're not somehow.
Amanda, I have a question for you while they're trying to figure out the audio. What's the employment life expectancy of an allied security guard?
It really varies depending on the position. At our gates, we do have the highest turnover. It's really the most difficult position. Um, you know, just dealing with the volume, the heat, there's a lot of factors that go into it, but we have the highest turnover at our gates. So we're constantly training those personnel.
I just want to make it a, a, a point that, that we hear what Amanda's saying because. Allied security is one of the largest national security forces and they have a hard time getting security guards to patrol our areas. It's one of the biggest challenges they have. But like Councilmember Mark Terry said, I think the biggest thing that we need to do is awareness. And I think Amanda brought some very valid points of making sure that we're documenting each incident. Um, I know that I've personally have done this and they're able to pinpoint the exact time at which someone's entering the community. And pull up that footage and verify if ID was actually taken or not. So I just want to applaud you, Amanda, for reminding us of the importance of that. Um, I'm not trying to give any credit when credit may be not due, but it's a very, very tough job that they have trying to find people. To continue to secure our community. Um, and also, you know, from our standpoint, from a city standpoint, please keep them coming. When it comes with a real, a crime, that's what our law enforcement's here for. We need to make sure that we're contacting them directly. Um, you know, the, the security guards, they can't do what our law enforcement can do. So we just got to make sure that we know the difference. And I think we need to do more work on, on letting people know that difference and that distinction.
You guys can I, can I comment one thing here also with gate entry? Um, I know I had a problem getting notifications of people coming in the gate, uh, when they were called in. And Amanda fixed it for me on my cell phone. Um, it, I gotta believe I'm not the only one that has a hard time getting that turned on. So if you ha, do not have it turned on to your phone, that you're not getting text message. That when somebody comes in the gate, when you're calling him in or not calling him in, um, please reach out, um, to Amanda or somebody in POA that's staffing. To help get that set up. So you're, make sure you're being notified. I think it'd go a long way, um, for knowing if you have somebody on your permanent guest list that came in the gate. This way you would know if they actually used it and came in. So I think it's super important that you guys are all being encouraged to get that signed up. Make sure you're getting that text message notifications. It, it's a setting, but I think that, um, it might depend on what, if you're Android or iPhone or what version of Dwelling Live. So I think there's some moving pieces there. I, I know Amanda was able to fix it for me with two seconds. So. I, I know the POA can go in and update it on your account himself. So to make sure you're getting a text message as well.
Thanks, Alex. Alyssa.
Alyssa Escardy Caspers. Three, eight, four, six, two, nine, four. First, I think I echo everybody in this room by thanking everyone who's sitting in front of us. I counted, I think fifteen between the POA, the city council, our first responders and our staff. So thank you for having this event for us. Um, what I'd like to do, and many of you have read my very long, very, um, passionate posts on Facebook. Is to remind our community that it's not just about the fifteen people sitting in front of us. We need to take personal responsibility as well. We need to take personal responsibility for who we're calling in the gates. We need to take personal responsibility for how our children are behaving or not behaving. And stop with the not my kid, not my guest, not my mother, not my father, not my sister, not my brother. We as a community can't just rely on the fifteen of you to take personal responsibility. And I think that's very, very important. We rely on you, but we have to rely on ourselves also if we want our community to be successful. And again, you see my posts, some people agree, some people don't, but in the end, it's about us. And if we don't take that responsibility, we can't force that onto you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alyssa. Renee, come on down. As long as we have comments and want to have a dialogue.
All right, uh, first on the permanent guest list, you might already be planning on this, but I hope you send via, or notification via mail. To all members, because I have some elderly friends, they don't even use email. So that'll be very, very helpful on that. Um, sorry, I have a list. Um, and I'm so glad Alyssa spoke because you were spot on. I had an Italian mother from New York. I feared her more. Than anyone, even those who carry guns. So, um, I think. Parents stepping up would be really, really helpful. And also the members stepping up too and reporting so many times. I'll hear something and I'll say, well, did you call? Did you let the parents? No, I don't want to do that. So we need to help self-police. Um, so with that self-policing to the city. Um, and I spoke with Councilmember Castillo on this, I sent her a screenshot. Marietta has a fifty, up to a fifty thousand dollar fine for fireworks. And that might be something. That the city wants to consider, um, with people having more and more cameras, hopefully people signing up for the camera program. And sheriffs being able to use that, we might be able to self-police that because while someone can get away with it because police are, are busy doing. I would say real crime, but you're helping in other ways. But someone thinks they can run out and a lot of firework. They might just tick off a neighbor who can send that video in, and a fifty thousand dollar fine just once is a wake-up call. I know when we increase the fines to a thousand dollars for bad behavior, I'll put it that way. Um, it helped to do a little bit of a wake-up call, certainly when the parents had to pay it, uh, woke them up a little bit more. I also wanted to thank POA and city for the additional staff. And I think you might want to share those numbers too, because many people, though you shared it at the last meeting, don't realize that the POA paid for. X amount of additional sheriffs. The city also paid for X amount of additional sheriffs. And that's critical because it shows, um, your proactiveness in this for both Fiesta Day. Uh, and I, that might be something to get out there. Also for the numbers of the citations and the great reports that are every month. During the meetings, you may want to consider posting that to Instagram, similar to Chief Latendras. Um, I, I follow the fire station. You guys have your reports go out on a monthly basis and that's always helpful. Oh, and also I'd like to remind everyone, rules committee meeting, every meeting except the appeals is open to all members. So if you're interested in attending the rules committee meeting tomorrow night, um, you can do that. Same with security advisory committee. You can also reach out to the liaison and send any notification that you want on that. And then a question for the city on the one patrol officer, if you guys handle an arrest, so let's say someone's really stupid. And they get arrested and then you have to go out and take them to jail and process and all that other stuff. Does another officer then come in to take your spot during that? Or is it dark during that time? Cause I've heard mixed from, um, different officers. So I wasn't sure on that one. So.
Is that for security patrol or for sheriff? Cause we, we don't typically patrol the lakes. We just per, or the, we provided deputies for the fourth of July on the lake, but we don't patrol the lake.
So during the day, just normal weekday, you don't come into Canyon Lake in the gates and just cruise around?
About vehicles in the, yes. So we have one deputy here every hour of the day. So if they do get an arrest and leave, typically what will happen is we do have other deputies that could backfill that position.
Perfect. And last but not least, Chief Latendras, I'd like to thank you for having the additional staff. I know that's a lot of sacrifice to the men and women who filled that. I'd like to thank the P O A for funding half of that. Um, and then the city for only charging us 50% for that additional staffing and that for both fourth of July and yesterday. And I know that bill was right around, you know, $6,500 for each. So, um, that worked out. It was cheaper with Cal Fire on that one, but, um, I really appreciate the staff who did all that. Uh, so thank you for that. That's it.
Thank you, Renee. Anyone else? Yes. Tom, one more.
Hi, Thomas. Real briefly, I just, I just want to mention, I, I, I do agree with taking personal responsibilities, taking responsibility of our own kids. We don't have young kids here, but anyway, um, but I want to be, I, I, I want you guys to, to address the, the concept of policing each other because I, I, I know that that's where fights break out when someone's trying to control someone else's behavior. Um, and, um, someone's unruly and I just don't, I, I want to cautious caution everyone about trying to control other people's behavior. Thank you.
That's a good comment, Tom. Yes. Our responsibility is not to enforce, is to notify. And if there's an issue going on to, uh, to address that. Next speaker, yes.
This just goes back to the overcrowding on the fourth mainly. Uh, Neil Canton, I live on Village Way and, um, this may be a stretch, but I don't know all the hotspots on holidays. I've been here a few years. Our street is very busy. What about closing it to through traffic? Mi- block it. If they want to go to the park, walk. If you don't want to walk, you don't come down. We had the, it was packed with people walking, golf carts, cars. Young lady, uh, crashed her golf cart. Caused a little scene. She got pretty, pretty racked up. Anyway, they called police, they called fire, called 911, everybody came. So now we have all that going on, plus people walking, plus golf cart. It's just, I don't know. It might be a stretch. No, maybe all the hotspots, block it. If they don't want to walk down, you don't come, you know?
A fair consideration. That was one, uh, under the comment where we talked about gated access. Um, one of the considerations, it, it goes under that, uh, under that recommendation and gated access to the lodge holiday harbor. It, it may include closing off some streets where you could either walk in or drive in. And so that, that's all, we, we put that all kind of in the same category, but it is a consideration that, that, that we will evaluate.
Well, the other kicker too is where are all these cars going? Cause there's nowhere, at this point, there's nowhere to park. The park's full. They're just going around the block and then when, when, when everything's over, it, it could take hours to clear up. So just a thought, uh, you know, throwing it out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moreno.
First off, I want to address the city, the sound wall that's being painted right now. That's an awesome color. I love it. Thank you very much. Okay. Okay. Now I'm going to address a P O A here. Okay. First off, I want to defend community patrol. Um, it's no secret that I do a little bit of contract work in the lake. I've been in the booths installing cameras and microphones. And I see the mentality and the audacity of these characters that come in our gates trying to get a guest pass. No driver's license. Or they'll pull up in their diesel truck, blasting their music on the phone and doing five other things. And, um, it, it's ridiculous. Um, maybe a couple of the board members could, you know, stop by the booth and for 15 minutes and just see the characters that are coming into our lake. Okay. And I mean, it's one after another. No driver's license. Turn around and then they fight and all that good stuff. And I probably shouldn't be telling all this info, but I'm just telling you what I see out there in the real world. You know, that's why I, um, have always called guest passes, uh, guest pass abusers, because they abuse our community bigger than it's, it's a big issue. And, um, I still don't understand why we have two lanes for guest passes. I mean, that's absolutely ridiculous. It cheapens my membership. Um, if I have to sit and wait, I don't care if it's a minute or 30 seconds. Why should I have to wait? To let somebody dig around for a guest pass. Um, and the returning issue, I think that's huge on your, uh, uh, number of, uh, returning guests. I, I like that thought. Okay. You don't have to answer these questions now, but why do we have a permanent guest pass list in the first place? Why? Okay. Can I please have the pros of why we need this? Okay. Why are we waiting until September 1st to reset the permanent guest list? And we waiting for summer to get over and everybody, everybody to have their fun and then we'll reset it. I say we reset it every year. Right before, um, if yesterday, you know, that would be a great weekend to do it. You do it right there. You squash it. Okay. And why does a service provider automatically get a 10-day pass? And I mean, I've seen this thousands of times. I've caught guys illegally launching their boats in the North Ski area. I go check their vehicle. They got a 10-day pass. How did they get a 10-day pass? You know, how is that even allowed? Anyways, those are just questions you guys can answer, uh, or you know, at a later date or just think about, and I'm not trying to be mean or anything like that. Lastly, very lastly, I want to congratulate, uh, the P O A cornhole champion team of George and Bill for defeating the city fire and sheriff's department. Congratulations, guys. That was awesome. Yeah. Thank you.
Uh, Chuck, just to clarify on your, on the last point for service provider pass, to clarify, it is up to 10 days. So when a member calls or you go on your app and you're calling in a service provider, you could do one day, 48 hours, 72 hours, up to 10 days. So if you want, if you're having your house remodeled and your contractor is going to be coming for four months, every 10 days, you'd have to call them back in and refresh their pass. So up to 10 days, it's not automatically 10 days.
Thanks Amanda. And I was, again, just in terms of the accountability that Alyssa referred to earlier. I know, uh, when I call in a service provider, I, and it's for a day, I put them in for the day. Uh, only if they're doing extended period of, of work over a few days will I, will I go along. It's just a good practice that we all can do to help, help with that problem. Next.
Hi, I'm Angie Norton and I don't know my lot number, but I just have a couple of questions that I um, just, I don't know if it's taboo or nobody wants to answer this or what's happening, but why can we not limit alcohol from our beaches and our parks? I'm not understanding that. I did a deep dive into beaches and parks in California. And for the most part, most of them do not allow alcohol on the beach, especially hard alcohol. And I remember the, the guy at Sunset Beach that almost got pummeled by some guy that didn't even belong there. And here he's completely inebriated and nothing is happening. This gentleman isn't even supposed to be in Canyon Lake. Okay. The other thing I wanted to ask, because I haven't seen it posted and my neighbor is fairly new to Canyon Lake. And she asked me and her son, her grandson got into trouble for damaging the golf course for whatever it was. And so I, of course, as a caring grandma said to her, well, why is he out there at that time of night anyway? You know, what is he doing out there? And she goes, well, there's no curfew in Canyon Lake. So my question to you, is curfew posted anywhere in Canyon Lake that if children under a certain age are out on the streets that they're going to get fined or that they're going to get picked up or anything? So can anybody answer that for me?
I believe it's 10:00 PM, right? Yeah, it's 10:00 PM. We do have a curfew. It's 10:00 PM. I think it's a great idea that we once again go back to awareness and educating the folks on that because you're right. There's a bunch of kids, you know, I think, I think it was Redlands and I could be wrong, but they had an eight PM curfew at one time and that's old school. Um, so that we had that conversation and looking at maybe changing that, or at least, you know, doing a campaign to let people know that there is one that exists. And, you know, riding an e-bike at 10:30 at night, going 40 miles an hour is a no bueno.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak, offer feedback, ask a question? I think we are good. I'm going to offer our, our friends, any closing comments from our members of the city council?
You know, tonight we, we made some comments about how unique Canyon Lake is. And, you know, you, you saw me and, and the captain talking throughout the night because we live in a very unique community where they can't enforce anything because it's all private property. And that's, that's the, the real issue. All the comments that were made tonight and ideas are all phenomenal. And I think we as a community to go back to the importance of awareness, because if we want our rights to have private property, which we do here, it enables us to do certain things with our police providers. And that's just the difficult task. But I assure you that this council and this P O A board is working together to find solutions to resolve those, to be creative. Um, to find ways that we can make our community better. It all starts with you. See, folks, tonight, the problem isn't you in this room. It's the ones that aren't here. It's the ones that aren't part of this conversation. I've had many people ask, hey, should you town halls? And I go, you know, he'll show the people who aren't causing the problems. So how do we combat that? We do exactly what was mentioned here tonight, and that is being informing each other, sharing videos that we're trying to post of awareness, letting their friends and neighbors know, calling in like Amanda had mentioned, doing the same thing with code enforcement issues, letting our sheriff's department know. It all comes back to the importance of policing ourselves. But I promise you, you have my word and my colleagues' word that we're making public safety to the number one priority until we come up with some good resolution. Um, that we believe the community will have buy-in on. Um, so on behalf of myself and our council, um, and obviously our sheriff's department and the fire department and our city manager here tonight, we're here to serve you. And that is exactly why we're here tonight. So, um, if you have any questions, you can come up to us and ask us after, but I just want to applaud each and every one of you because you're not the problem. You're the one who's trying to fix it. Thank you.
Mickey Mayor Smith.
Eric, council member Terry has, has.
Sorry, go ahead.
I want to thank all of you for being here tonight. I think the response from the last board meeting to continuing to where we are this evening, this is helpful. This is where change comes from. And I, I can promise you change. The mayor and I did have a discussion on fines. And we are looking at ways that next year, if you light out fireworks, you catch a tree on fire and we identify who you are, those fines are going to be severe. Is Art still here? Did Art leave? I agree, we need to have a neighborhood watch. And I think it begins right here in this room. I think there are ways that we can work with our sheriff's department. They can guide us through the process and we can bring community awareness. And I, I, I think it's about time that we do have a neighborhood watch or reengage with neighborhood watch. I think it's a very effective program. I also believe that we do need to be more proactive in a safety campaign. You need to know, other residents need to know what to do when a situation arises. No longer do I want to hear us calling, you know, the P O A when something serious has occurred. We need to know who to call and when to call them. Lastly, I, I got a question for the sheriff. Cameras, if we go to Holiday Harbor, any of the beaches, let's say we equip them with high def cameras. How useful are they after the fact? Is this something that we could go and let's say we, we, we hear of an incident that occurred. There wasn't an officer there. We didn't witness it firsthand. Do we have the ability to go back to those cameras and, and further the investigation?
Cameras are a great tool and it's just depending on the type of crime, but yes, we can use that evidence. That is evidence, direct evidence.
So I think that's another way that the two of us can work together and, and take a proactive approach. I also want you, I want to encourage you not to get your information on social media. Some of it's good. I, I know when it came to the accident, I was in contact with our chief. I was in contact with law enforcement. I was in contact with our city manager. And from the initial story that was circulating out in the general public to when the true answer came towards the very end of that day was dramatically different. So we just need to be careful what we're putting out there. And, and the way you can do so is I encourage you to call any of us. Uh, I got a, I got a, uh, pretty lengthy email that I have here, um, the day after the fourth of July. I immediately responded, our city manager immediately responded and we will respond. You probably don't think we will, but we'll respond. And, and if I don't have the answer, we then will go up the chain and we will get you that answer. Don't be afraid to use the people that you elected to do this job. Lastly, something came up over the last few weeks and it's in regards to our fire department. I cannot tell you how much this city council worked its tail off to get a city fire department. And I applaud them for doing so because their engagement with you is through the roof. I believe, I don't even know how we surveyed this, but it's like a 95, which I think is low approval rating from you, the residents in regards to the service that they are providing. And I first of all, would like to applaud them. Just a little over a year in service, 18 months. What a great job, gentlemen. Thank you. I want to address some of the social media going around in regards to how we compensate our firefighters. Our overall city council approved $276 in compensation increases this year, of which more than 255,000 went directly to our firefighters and our chiefs. Any of this information in regards to what they are paid, their compensation. And I'm not going to bore you with all the details, but I'll be more than happy to share that with you. We are committed to this fire department. I had a discussion with Brendan Gorder, who is the president of the Canyon Lake Firefighters Association. And he reached out to me. And I called him and he, he said, I have permission to read this. I wanted to take the time to extend a huge thank you once again for everything that you have done thus far and the work that you continue to do. We truly appreciate the relationship we have been able to build. In addition, I would also like to take the time to address recent events that have been occurring over the last few weeks. Most notably, the comments made by individuals during the two most recent council meetings, as well as comments made to individuals on social media and within the community. Please understand that any of these comments made by those individuals were made independently of the Canyon Lake Firefighters Association. The Canyon Lake Firefighters Association was not aware of the planned public comments during any of the city council meetings, nor have we met or discussed in passing any of the issues that they are speaking on. We truly value the relationship we have built thus far and would like to continue growing it through transparency, good faith. And therefore I feel the obligation, obligation to spread some light on these recent events. Please do not hesitate to reach out to me if you have any comments and questions. I personally met very early on in my tenure with this association. And I did promise transparency. And we will continue to show transparency and we will continue with every ounce of our power to compensate these gentlemen for what they're worth. And it's, we've, we've been doing this for 18 months. I think we're doing a great job and I look forward to working with you guys in the days, weeks, months and years to come. Thank you.
Eric, would you, do you have any final comments you'd like to add?
I think everybody's covered. And I think, I think you're, uh, you have a bunch of stuff in the pipeline, uh, proposed rules. A lot of this community input is going.
A lot of this community input is going to be, um, discussed and new rules implemented. Uh, a new bicycle registration program and, um, really want to thank the city for participating tonight. And, um, and, and thank the hundred people, uh, about 60 here in the room. Last time I looked about 22 on, on Zoom and Facebook. So over a hundred people, um, participated plus the 20 of us. So, uh, I appreciate everyone showing up tonight.
Thank you, Alex.
Yeah, I, I, this has been my word is manage expectations. Um, you know, everybody's believes that we have to police ourselves and we do. And I think that's the biggest, um, problem. This community has been the wild, wild west for the 22 years that I've lived here. Um, these problems, um, with crowding in July 4th didn't happen overnight. They happened over multiple, multiple years and it slowly got worse and worse. And now we're sitting here and we're like, we're fed up. Our members can't go to the beaches where before the members owned the beaches, they were there and it wasn't guests. And so, um, we need to strive to make sure that our members can use our amenities, uh, every holiday, um, all the time. Even if it's a random Friday at Sunset Beach, we need to make sure our members are safe and they enjoy it. With e-bike, yeah, you know, three years ago, this wasn't a problem. You know, every city in the U S is dealing with this. It doesn't matter. Go, go look at the city of Encinitas. Go look at Huntington Beach. Go look at the beach communities. They're dealing with this in a bigger, um, window than we are. Um, we hear the state's going to come down with new rules and laws and it's, you know, it's going to happen. Um, and you know, the biggest thing that we have to do is a P O A, which is we're different than everybody else, you know, they're a city. We're a P V, P O A. We're running private, you know, private property. Um, and we have to make sure that we don't overextend. And, you know, to the point that we make it so difficult to enforce what we want done, that we can adhere and get it done. So, you know, finding that balance is going to be tough, but we're, I want to thank all you guys for being engaged on this because you guys are the eyes and ears. You're the ones that have to tell your neighbors. You're the ones that have to communicate to your social group, you know, what we're going, doing and why we're doing it. Um, you, you guys in the community is asking us to put more rules in place, um, to curb some of these issues, which we don't have a problem with that. But, you know, we have to make sure they're enforceable as well. So, um, there's some great ideas. I think that we, um, as a board, um, and with the city, I think we're, we're leaps and bounds where we were just two weeks ago. Um, July 4th wasn't even two weeks ago. July 3rd was. So put that in perspective. We've already had a board meeting. We have a workshop. We have rules committee tomorrow night. We, I think we have a security committee that's next Tuesday night. Um, so there's, there's a lot of moving pieces that we're trying to get this done and try to move forward, uh, and so forth. So just applaud you guys for being engaged. It, it means a lot to us. It makes our job easier. Um, that means we're not making decisions in a bubble. So thank you very much for being out here, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Jeff.
One of the things you hear, and it's a cliche, it's become a cliche is the see something, say something. So I want to talk about just a little bit behind that. We've covered where to report, whether to the city or to the P O A tonight. And if you have any questions, please reach out to us on that. But keep in mind, if you're not reporting this, we cannot make good decisions. We need good information if we're going to make good decisions. So all these problems that we've talked about do fall on all of us and we do need to hear back from you. The other thing I'd like to mention is we are working towards securing the motorcycle parking area. We've got a subcommittee that's going um, forward with looking at that and recommendations. And the last two things I'd like to ask is if you haven't signed up for the camera program, and I know I say this at the close of every meeting, it's very important that you sign up for it. And if you have signed up for it, bug your neighbor to sign up for it. We need to get more people registered with that. It helps. Um, that I'm sure the R S O sitting here would tell you the same thing. It helps. They can go back, look that up. And they have to get your permission to do it. It's not a big brother thing. But some of the feedback we've heard is people think that they can just go in and pull video. It's all, whatever you're willing to let them look at. So please sign up for that. And then please join us for National Night Out and bring a friend. And that's all I've got tonight, because I'm pretty sure we all want to go home now.
Thank you, Jeff. Joe?
I want to thank everyone for being here tonight. Uh, thank city for representing, being represented here. It was great and some really good information. And I, I really have to tell you how impressed I am with the crowd that came out last week at our open session. It was remarkable. Um, it really showed me and I think the board, uh, how serious this is for the entire community. And that's what prompted us to call for the workshop and aggressively start looking at all this. Through that period, we got many comments at the meeting. We got even more emails directly to the board, all with good, positive input, um, and a number of great ideas and ones we can build on. And it's a challenge for us now to take those ideas and turn them into some sort of a reality and bring it back to you folks and let you know that there are some things that were mentioned that we can do and some things that maybe just aren't as practical, or, or maybe we'll wait and see if we really need to do that. But, um, the decisions we come back with, hopefully in the next month, um, will be ones that we feel are best for the time and the period right now to address. And I hope we'll get your cooperation and understanding. And if there are some questions or concerns, obviously you can email the board. But, um, I just want you to know that, uh, we're taking this decision seriously and we're going to address it for what we think is best for the entire community, uh, not for individual agendas or ideas. Uh, also I want to reiterate the camera program. I think it's a great idea. And when I first heard it, it was a no brainer. It was just, why not sign up? My, my ring doorbell is sitting there. Uh, for me and now the police can use it if they see something in my neighborhood, they give me a call. They say, can we access it? I say, yes. And that's it. It's a no, no brainer. So I encourage you, uh, to consider that. And thank you all for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Joe. Greg?
Uh, last year, about two months into this job, we were in a board meeting and I looked around the room and I said, you know, since getting this job, I have a new set of eyes. In other words, I, all of a sudden I was seeing 12 year olds writing, uh, driving golf carts and all of these things I, I just wasn't seeing before. And everybody looked at me like, oh, that's nothing new. This is what happens to everybody that gets on this board. But what I'm seeing here i- in the past couple of weeks is a lot of you people now have a new set of eyes as well. And it's really cool because look, look what's happened. You've all showed up here. You showed up, many of you showed up last week and online and so forth. You're talking to your neighbors. So now we all have a new set of eyes on these issues that we're dealing with. But, uh, I want to thank you all for coming and I, I think the future is going to look very bright. We're all going to work real hard and, uh, keep those eyes working because we've got some work to do, but it's going to get done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then in closing, I just, the number one question I've, I've heard in the last week was will you act? Um, and I think what you saw tonight is, is the beginning of that. Uh, we've got, we've got the city, we've got the sheriff, we've got, we've got the fire department, we've got all the P O A, we've got our staff. All of the, all of the organizations involved in making improvements to our safety and security are here. Um, in seven days, we, we pulled that off in seven days. We got all the feedback from you. We're going to take more time. We're involving our committees. Really appreciate the time you took out of your day to come and listen to us, to speak with us, to share your perspectives. It's important that we get all of your perspectives on this. And I want to encourage you to continue the dialogue with us. We want to hear all of yours and appreciate the comments we had, had on e-bikes today, right? And there, there's some things that, that people were upset about. There's also e-bike users who are saying, hey, wait a minute, I think about this. We need to know all the perspectives in order to make a, uh, a better decision. So please continue to speak up, write us, call us, and more importantly, stay engaged. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all for attending.